Chris and Pat were ready to begin the meeting for today. Alright, when that said, I call the meeting to order. I don't know if we're set with our streaming as well?
Yeah.
We are. Fantastic. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
None that I know.
So the agenda is as it is, great. And then we'll move to item 4.1, which is the public comment period. And I'll turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Walker.
Okay, our first speaker signed up is Ari Jewett.
Hello, everyone. I'm proud to lead the science department at the high school. We're working hard to expand opportunities for students. Expand access, expand diversity in our advanced classes. I took a trip with some very advanced students to Washington DC, where they presented their research at the International Space Station Symposium. The new space economy, as it goes from government to commercial, the opportunities are opening up for our students. And we want to make sure that our science department keeps track with that. We're offering an astronomy class this year. And I'm very proud to be teaching and reworking an old course into a project-based learning course for those students who struggle the most, allowing them to take physics, which I think I once said to you, there's a lot of students who never get near physics. It's a chance to do it by building. And so I'm very excited about that. I do have to express concerns about the seven-period schedule and universal lunch and how that's going to affect our offerings. To their credit, our building administration is working hard to make this constricted schedule try to fit. But there are things by nature of having a shorter schedule that are going to affect programming. One of the reasons given for that schedule was that there would be fewer study halls. Students use study halls, whether it's for studying or for relaxing. I think there's some value to that. If the concern is that there are students who are not taking enough classes, well, it is on us to reach out to those students, engage them with their education, and encourage them to try new courses that they wouldn't have tried before, or to seek out peer counseling. Eight periods with universal lunch, by virtue of just being longer, allows that versus seven periods, which constricts those opportunities. One of the other benefits of the seven-period schedule was longer periods. Forty-seven versus forty-one minutes, which is definitely a consideration. One thing to think about though is that, I don't know of any other New York State schools that have just seven periods, because it's not too fit. But plenty of them have forty-one-minute periods. So while not ideal, I feel like we can work with that. You think about what I'm going to tell you about what gets lost. You know, that's a major concern. Last year, students who graduated through their four years, they had the opportunity to take all four AP sciences, plus engineering classes, plus Spanish classes, whatever. They had opportunity. In a seven-period class, a seven-period date, that is going to be less likely without tacking on zero periods or eight periods. It's just, it's a reality that students are going to be making some tough choices. They already are as we get into the scheduling process. Another thing that concerns me is that students lose the opportunity to overcome tracking in the middle school. You know, they are who they are, or they make the decisions they make when they are seventh graders. The problem is they shouldn't follow them through the high school. They should be able to double up at some point to be able to catch up to their peers. And I'm not advocating for the old eight-period schedule where kids had to miss lunch. I'm saying give them more. Give them those periods, plus a lunch break in the middle that we know is so important. I'm not sure what the benefit is here, why we're doing this. If it is to cut costs, then we need to know that. And we need to know what's being cut before we go after educational programming. We don't want to be, our legacy in 2022, offering students less than their siblings had when we could be offering them more with a decent alternative that starts at the same time, ends at the same time. Thank you. And it's not too late, and I'm happy to help with it.
Oh, and just as a matter of information, we always answer everybody at the end, so we don't answer individuals as they're speaking.
Thank you.
Billy Moss.
Hello, everyone. My name is Billy Moss. Today tonight, the first thing I want to say, that I'm not here as an angry black man. I'm not a person complaining because I didn't get my way. I'm a football coach with over forty years of total football experience, nineteen years of coaching experience. But I've been denied the varsity coach position for the last seventeen years. Not given the opportunity to coach at any level for the past eleven years. Recently, I was told I didn't have the skillset that they wanted. I'm also a difficult employee with a concern for the children who play and want to play football. I was hired to work at the South Hill just past February to work with a child one-on-one that needed a serious one-on-one attention as a teacher's aide. Coaches have been hired without certification and have been allowed to coach without completing the process. This could be looked up on the Teach Resource Certification outline. It's been the history of that, a long history. I want to say that, what about liability? We have teachers that can't teach, but coaches can coach. The interview process that I've gone through also includes, all of a sudden, meetings, which I feel they're all premeditated. Those who say they're in charge, they're not in charge. This is taking orders from others. Very good athletes and coaches are leaving the district. Example, Mike Newher, who coached here, won the JV championship, but was denied the coaching position. Went on to Newfield, and as everyone knows, if you follow basketball, won the state championship this past season. In closing, it takes a village to raise a child, but first, you must know how. Sam Cook says, "A long change is going to come." For those who follow football, and numbers don't lie, with a record of twenty-four and one thirty-three since the year 2004, and recently, six and twenty-two, and no JV team going on the last three years, when is that change going to come? I have copies of my resume. I also have printed on there my experience working with kids. I also have thirty years of experience working with at-risk kids at McCormick Secure Center. I work with kids that I believe people in this room wouldn't even sit next to. In closing, I just want to say that it's always been a passion. I've never given up on it. It's been my dream. I keep trying to pursue it, but I feel that there's roadblocks, there's plenty of roadblocks with very little explanation. And so, that being said, I have others that would like to speak on behalf. I'd like to introduce my son, Marcus Moss, who at one time served for the US Army for four years. As a parent, and if you had a child in the Army, and when he was stationed over in Afghanistan in Iraq, he'd ask me, "Dad, what's up with the football team?" You're not going to tell your child anything bad while he's over there in service, in war. I couldn't tell my son anything for four years about the football team, because it wasn't that good.
Thank you, Coach Moss. Normally, we ask for folks to sign up in advance as part of our policy to speak. I understand the circumstances, and so we'll make an allowance for a few minutes. Normally, we keep coming to the three minutes, so.
Apologies, I took off work just to come over.
Can you state your name to make sure that we have a record?
Marcus Moss. I just got off, took some time off work real quick. Come over here as long as people are. My name is Marcus Moss, class 2010. And I came here today to speak my mind on what I thought has been going on with the NITC football program. I grew up on those fields outside. Practice fields at Amherst Stadium. The memories I have from there will carry on with me my entire life. Football made me who I am today. My best friend of twenty years, now I'm the best man in his wedding. In three weeks, I met right out there on those football fields. I was the water boy growing up for both JV and varsity football teams, and I got to see things from an interesting viewpoint. Call me crazy, but my dream as a young kid was to suit up and play under those Friday night lights. To me, there was nothing better than that. As I got older, I realized that that glory of playing football here in NITC is merely extinct. My father spoke, since 2004, team has composed a record of twenty-four wins, one hundred and thirty-three losses, coming out to an eighteen percent winning percentage. As an alumni myself, it's truly embarrassing. I've seen coaches who are not as qualified or barely had any coaching experience, given the varsity job, but were more qualified individuals, with respect in this community, time and time again. From the top, from the top to the bottom of the program, seems to me it's in shambles. I helped coach small-fire program in 2019, I got to see that firsthand. Also, for a double-A school such that did not have a JV team for a consecutive year, once again, embarrassing. I do not believe it's simply not because kids, there are not enough kids to play. It's because kids do not want to play for a program, which is in the state that it is right now. Coaches are only invested in students during the season, also with no football meetings that I know of at the end of the school year to give players news or updates about upcoming plans for the fall or for the summer. Now, while I've worn the red and gold, I have lost games fifty, sixty to zero. And I can tell you right now, it's not fun at all. And I can't really argue against a player that does not want to go through that today. Years ago, alumni in the Mananuel community decided to revamp their program by hiring qualified attentive coaches and implementing the same offensive defense being grown from a small-fire level all the way to the varsity. This allows for easy transition for players over the years to retain both plays, positions, while making it easier to build unity and overall increase success of the program. Along with strong support from their community and a solid program, these coaches aided in the team, winning a couple of state football titles. Now, I'm not saying that they can just take this blueprint from Mananuel and file it to a team, but something has to change. Do you know what the definition of insanity is? Is doing the same thing over and over while expecting a different outcome. I feel that NITC has been doing just so for a while, and many people, like myself, are very frustrated. My senior year of football, 2009, we won six games. It was the most games NITC has won at that time in fifteen years. That was thirteen years ago. I want generations that come after me to do better than I did. And I feel, and feel what it's like to be probably winning programs in a community that cares about them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Coach Moss, thank you, Marcus Moss. Chris is in a tough position to not follow our policies and procedures of having people sign up in advance.
I understand.
Given the circumstances, I was allowing Marcus to speak.
Okay, sixty seconds, sir.
Well, what we normally do is work through people who have signed in, and then we call for additional people.
We'll cover, I respect that.
So we will do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Matthew, sir, I'm not wrong.
No.
Eric Walker.
Good evening, everybody. I jotted a couple of things down on my phone. I want to respect the time. If I didn't organize my thoughts, I might be up there for four or five minutes, so. My name is Eric Walker, and I grew up in this district. I lived here for most of my life. I have two boys, and my oldest is starting pre-K next month. And parenthood has this way of giving you perspective. And so here I am at a school board meeting, right? I'm here in support of my community. It doesn't just mean my community. I'm not talking about just people of color. I'm talking about this town, this area. It's a special place, I think everybody here knows that. That's why you're here. We all want better for the kids, we all want better for the people coming after us. And I know personally, participating in this football program with somebody like Coach Moss, it does a lot for you as a young man, right? He's a solid stand-up individual. He can instill discipline, integrity, quality work ethic, the ability to be acutely aware of not only your responsibility but those around you, and the willingness, maybe even appreciation, for sacrificing self for the people that you work with and that you care about, right? He helped me personally to be a better communicator on and off the field. It's been good for my marriage, honestly. He showed me how, he was a very good example on how to be a good father, how to be a good husband. He's a good member of the community, right? There's a lot of respect for this man. He's done a lot of good things for a lot of good people. As far as the X's and O's go, that's not to be questioned. I think anybody who spent five minutes with him, he knows the game inside and out. I'm genuinely not here to shame anybody. I'm not here to denigrate anybody. I'm not here to talk bad about the past coaches. I just think that if there is an opportunity to revamp the program, you know, maybe rebuild the JV team, if you will, or if there is a head coaching search for varsity, I know of no better candidate than Coach Moss. I just, I really would like you all to consider, maybe some of the personal grievances, seems like it's a small town people talk. There's really no space for that as far as the kids go. It has nothing to do with them. They need us to be unified. And if people can argue all day about anything, which they do, one thing that we can all agree on is that kids need more options, more outlets, not less. So I'll deal with that. I appreciate your time. Hope everybody has a good night.
Elizabeth Villiot. She would be virtual.
Hi, I'm present. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. So I'm calling in today because it's Taco Tuesday, and I got four kids, and my husband's at work. But I'm a new parent in the school district. My kids are going into first grade at Cuyahoga Heights. And I'm really concerned that fifteen teachers are not coming back next year. I'm a small business owner, and if half my staff left, I would know that there's a problem. I'm not here to point fingers, because my kids had a great year last year. And I think that it might be a sign of something more systemic, not just going on at the school, but I think that, you know, there needs to be some sort of standard in conducting exit interviews for teachers, even people retiring. So this way, you can't point fingers when fifteen people leave. You just look at their exit interview, and it'll tell you why they left. And I was wondering what kind of support the district gives new principals in terms of administration, leadership, communication, all these important skills that new principals need, and that maybe if they're lacking, their staff leaves. That's it, that's all I had to say today.
Thank you, and.
Yes, if there's anybody else that wants to speak, we have time for my homies, please. If you state your name for the record.
Dan Shriner, I apologize for interrupting and requesting. So I'm class of 2004. I'm here on behalf of Coach Moss and whatever else you can take away from this. So my relationship with Coach Moss goes back a long time, even before I was into varsity sports. Growing up, getting into modified, even small-fire, Coach Moss was always around, he was always a figurehead, and it kind of just lit up the room with excitement for me. But outside of that, I vouch for the man that Coach Moss is, because he's been, he's been there through a lot of what I've been through. He's given me guidance far beyond what a lot of, a lot of the teachers and administrators within the school have given me. So I don't know all the rules and regulations. My assumption from the outside is that district employees get priority with coaching positions. I don't know if that's true or not. What I'm coming to vouch for is the character of this gentleman. I've had teachers in this district, you know, I wasn't the best student. I'm doing well for myself now, I believe, but at the time, a seventh-grade teacher telling me, you know, "I'm not going to be so humorous when I'm flipping his burgers at the burger shop." That employee then went on to be promoted to principal at one of the middle schools here. I met with my guidance scouts for one time in ninth grade, and that was about it. On the flip side of this, the only person to ever take me on a college tour is Coach Moss. Walking down the line at senior night, no one's there. At the end of the line is Coach Moss. So just walking in this room, I see these up, and those could come directly from the heart of Coach Moss, all these characteristics here. You talk about culture of excellence, everything I did, not only in his presence, but outside of it, you know, he was a big influence. All the way down the line, equity, communication, it didn't matter who you were, where you came from, he treated you the same, and he taught you to treat others the same. So I don't want to spend a lot of time. I just want you to know the impact that this gentleman has. And it's beyond football, you know, like those losing seasons could keep coming, but the way this man develops kids is, that was imperative to my growth, right? So now I work within athletics at Cornell, and a lot of what he taught me, I try to bring to them. And some of these kids are in the lab growing heart cells and doing all this other stuff, but the X's and O's, the books, it's the life skills that I take from it, and the caring, and, like I said, commitment, honesty, you know, like that this gentleman was always there, and that's, I'd send my kids to him in a heartbeat, and I hope that he could influence more kids along the line. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
So that is the end of our public comment session. Next on the agenda is board responses. Before asking if there are any board responses, I'd like to hope both online and in the audience know that there are times when the board will not respond directly to a particular comment that was made for a couple of reasons. One, if it does deal with a personality issue, but oftentimes more importantly, to make sure that the board is able to gather more information and speak from an informed perspective. So folks may not hear a direct response to something that was said this evening, but please know that there is board consideration and additional conversation and discussion that will happen, even if it's not spoken this evening. I want to make sure that that's well-known. So with that being said, any board responses?
Well, I'll start with Ari Jewett and the high school schedule, and thank you for coming down here. My understanding as a board member, this is not a cost-saving method?
Measure.
Measure. I had a new tooth put in. I still misspeak words. That this, and administrative team, please correct me if I misspeak, but this is, this is a matter that the State Department of Education brought to be at the city school district four years ago. We had four years of a waiver that we did not have enough instructional time during the day. Defined instructional time as defined by the State Board of Education, that the eight periods that were equally long did not provide enough instructional time. And that by creating a universal lunch that was shorter and seven instructional periods that were longer, we made ourselves in compliance with New York State education law and requirements. And that we cannot lengthen the school day without renegotiating the teacher contract and all the other contracts, that we are constrained by the number of basically educational minutes that we have, that we have agreed to contractually. And that we had four years to try and figure out something, and this is what the school figured out. So it's not, I agree that it is going to limit educational opportunities for some students. I had two daughters go through at the city school district, one who was very good at STEM and one who was not. One who was very good at physics and one who was not, but they both tried. I was not good at physics, but I tried. I tried. It was a different time. And that this is really a question of what we can do with four students within the constraints of New York education law and our contracts. And hopefully, zero period, which many students do. My daughter did Project Lead the Way through zero period. And I don't know if we've talked about an optional eight period yet. I haven't heard anything this summer. I mean, that is what has led it. And doing eight periods plus a lunch period would shorten would make shorter instructional periods, which leads to more time in the hallways and less time in the classroom. I share your concerns, I share your concerns of the teachers, and I applaud all of your goals to get more students into science, to get more students into fields that are going to take off in the future. And I hope that we will continue to work with that. Mr. Moss and your supporters, thank you for coming down. Younger Mr. Moss, thank you for your service to our country. I respect everything that everyone said. My board colleagues will tell you that I am the last person to comment on athletic matters. I'm athletically illiterate. I appreciate everything that you've said. It is, again, it is contractual with the ITA that if there is a teacher who wants a coaching position or an employee, district employee, which is about.
Teachers.
Teachers. That teacher has the right of first refusal and the first right to coach a team. And you are not the first group of community members who have spoken with the board in general and with me in particular about dissatisfaction with who was chosen. And it's contractual. And it kind of, and I would say, I do not know who the current football coach is. So I'm not trying to cast aspersions on anyone, but that is the fact that we are dealing with. And I appreciate everything that everyone said.
Excuse me if I may interrupt.
I apologize, Coach Moss. Unfortunately, I realize that there's some different understandings about who is and what works, but this is an unfortunate place that we are not having a conversation back and forth as a response. So please, my apologies for interrupting.
Okay.
And that's all.
Ari, thank you for coming on. Thank you for what you're doing with our kids. As someone who wanted to do well in science, but didn't, I truly respect and appreciate everything. And I cannot do justice to what Pat just said, because that was my understanding. But my goal is to follow up and get some more understanding before I respond, because I want to come from a place of really speaking to this with some knowledge. And I don't have all of that right now, so. Coach Moss, this is one of those situations where it's difficult, because I consider you a personal friend. And mark this, and watching, you know, kids who grew up with my kids and, you know, I want to thank all of you for coming out, speaking to your heart. It's never easy, you know, coming to these meetings and sharing what you share. It's also difficult to speak to experiences and situations that we're not privy to, and we don't understand the dynamics. And I'm going to try to avoid that. I have to, because I can't really speak to it. But I do know, like I said, I consider you a friend. I've known you for well over fifteen years, you know? And I know what you do and who you are. So anything that was shared is 100% accurate, and I would never deny that. I think, and I would say that I think there's a need for more conversation, if there's space for that, and to get better understanding. So that's really where I'd like this to go. As a board member, as a colleague, as someone who's known you. And, you know, Eric, I know you said you didn't organize your thoughts. You did perfectly, you nailed it, so. And you as well. To go back, and I didn't want to skip over Elizabeth. We are discussing, well. Well, we're not sure how the, well, we do know the committee assignments line up, but that one of the top conversations is exit interviews. Really looking at the process, putting some strategic steps in place to get some things in line. Um, one, utilizing modern technology. And not just regular emails or pamphlets or something to fill out and really getting some things in place that we could solidify. I do want to. Stress also though, some folks just don't want to fill out an exit interview and, um, some things are not quantifiable. And I think hopefully we could gain understanding as to. As things lead, we do see ebbs and flows and unfortunately, um. We're seeing. Across all school districts, you know. That the, the teacher shortage is real. Um, but what, what's even scarier is just the, the employee shortage is real. Um, and I don't think it's going to change anytime soon. I think you can see these trends swing. It's, it's a, it's a couple of year process and you watch the pendulum. So. I, I'm not an expert by any means and I think we're all in very profound territory, um, so. But we are, that is the top of, um, the agenda for HR as we enter the new school semester.
Are there any other additional board responses?
Uh, I think, uh, from my perspective, I think that. This is the best kind of meeting we could ever have. See everybody who spoke, spoke about. Put kids as the number one priority. Believe it or not, all of my years doing this. It's a rare occurrence in my opinion. So, thank you. And, uh, Marcus, in fact, you spoke so eloquently and so passionately about your service. Eric. Watch you grow up. I can't tell you how proud I am of watching you float like that up here in front of us. And I fully expect you to be on this side of the table. So let's just be honest, right? He's a temporary administrative position to the heart. Dean, I don't know you, but. Your words obviously are from the heart. I'm a Cornell graduate. Yeah, I, I appreciate that the university has always had a decent balance between their academics and their athletic pursuits. Um, we start with the football program. Personnel is aside, history aside, I think it's shameful that our program doesn't allow children. To graduate with a prospect of scholarship. Right? Because we're talking about children. We have seen our basketball program come from the ashes, right? And now get to a point where these kids are going off to places that would have been. I'm not going to say they might not have thought about it. They might not have gone on to even a community college. Right? And now some of them come back to work in the distance. So I, I, I get it. City kid. Our basketball programs, Riverside churches, Gaucho's, instructions that. You knew how to play basketball from the time you were six. Every coach in the city knew that you knew how to play basketball from the time you were six. Right? No matter what school you went to, no matter what coach you had. I've always struggled with the fact that we're so disjointed here. Right? Athletically. I, I just don't. I don't understand it. We've had, we have the personnel, we have, we've had the time, we have the interest, we have the dedication. I mean, that man sitting right over there to your left, damn, it's. Busting his ass to get these kids involved in hockey and lacrosse and to provide a structure so they can matriculate. And then go on beyond this to something else. Somebody has to explain to me one day why we have done this in our football program. There are rules and regulations about all the things you all have said. My colleagues have to suffer with me all the time because my degree is a law degree. And I understand how flexible those rules are when people want them to be flexible. And I know programs around the state that have done different things. We have done different things when we felt the priority was there. So I never want to hide behind this block of, oh, we've got to do this and this state law and this. This is a very sophisticated and intelligent group. We do what we want to do and we make stuff happen. Artie, I tell you from my perspective, the only thing I've heard. Let's switch it up. The only thing I've heard about the, um. Program at the high school. Is about seven plus the universal. This first time anybody ever mentioned eight plus the universal. I'll tell you, my middle school and high school experience was also private. I was just from eight thirty to four thirty every day for five years. Four years. And I went back to public school so I could get down with my boys and win a state championship in basketball. Right? We also hear about these blocks. We can't do this because we have to reform this and we have, we got to do a lot of things differently in this district. If we want to continue to expand our capacity. Those of you who have been students here, when you said in two thousands, nineties. Hope we all see this as a different place. This is not even the same. It's not, it's not even recognizable in terms of where we come from. We're not close to our ceiling of where we could go. I don't know if anybody said this to you about the universal, but it was also a position to me that that would allow. Many of the services that we need, for students who are struggling to come in, because we want professionals to come in, mental health. Want to do a medical bus. We want to do anything like that. Volunteers, those professionals say, you got to give us one time. Right? You can't be, ask us a bounce out of it. Nine thirty in the morning and then two thirty afternoon. It's not going to work. So. There will be massive advantages to having this university lunch. The conscriptions on the timing in a class are what they are. If that's a state law, fine, but. Again, somebody smarter than me is going to have to tell me why we can't throw up the jacks. And expand the school days of middle school through high school. Secondary is. I don't get the impression we're doing the job at the secondary level of engaging students, right? And giving them joy in classrooms that we're obviously doing for the little squares and all that. Last thing I'm going to talk about is to Elizabeth about the, um. The educator, the teacher shortage. This is national. But I do think we have some responsibility to try and examine what we're doing here because these are our babies. These are our budgets. These are our buildings here. And we have begun discussions about some things we can do to make the lives of teachers better outside of this building, these buildings. And to improve the possibility that a teacher can get all the things they need to get done inside the building. And that's primarily, as Chris said, relying on a different level of technology. Systems and services that allow teachers to explore. Bedding and quality and responsive programming that gives them autonomy at the end of the day because that's what every truly professional teacher wants. Now I will say from my personal perspective. Seems to me a lot of teachers are bailing from the profession because the kids have said no mas. The pandemic made that clear. Rip the band-aid off the wall. Kids are not the same kids, are not in the same mental space, are not going to split up at the same E S. That they have been hearing for the rest of their educational career. They want to know that the teachers care about them. They want to know the teachers know their subject matter. They want to know if there's a future for them and an economy that works. So this is why we all took these roles, right? The anonymous or the eight of us now. We have to do what we can to figure this out. I'll just end by saying, thank you all for coming. Again, talk about. Number one constituency that keeps me up at night. People will start like this and then I'm looking up and I'm like, Eric. So, so thank you for that.
Um, I want to remind folks again, uh, we have had this conversation as a board for a number of years that board meetings are. Um, poorly constructed to have a dialogue and a conversation. A number of these items, we try to push towards a committee, which is much better built for engagement, realizing that puts additional. Pressure and responsibility on our community to attend additional meetings. That part I understand. But Artie, for an example, the seventh and eighth period, uh, at the high school conversation is not one that was initiated by the board that we can tell you. Um, the board did listen and pay attention and take a vote, but I'm hoping that could be a conversation that may be in curriculum. To have an additional conversation. So maybe the next curriculum meeting, there could be a much more in-depth conversation for that. Um, like a number of folks at the table, uh, Coach Moss, I think I've known you since my first day in Ethica. All right, all right. My brothers and your son grew up together. That part we know. There will be follow-up. That's all I can say in this space. Like there'll be follow-up. Um, and to Elizabeth talking about, uh, not just the teacher shortage, but the way in which I heard a phrase as something different at one particular school. Um, that is a conversation, uh, that I hope, that I know that the HR committee has already begun. Um, the conversation about HR or exit interviews, we've been having conversations with our HR department. I see a member of the Ethica Teacher Association leadership team that also have been conducting interviews as well. Um, so that is a conversation that I expect us to engage in and some real honesty, both about, uh. What's taking place nationally as we find a number of teachers leaving the profession. Folks know I say this pretty regularly. My job is to teach teachers how to teach. And we are struggling to get more and more people to engage in the profession. So we know that there is something there. Uh, but I hope we have an honest conversation about the culture of each of our buildings. Um, and, uh, where we find ourselves and how culture shifts, um, take place and what those look like. So. To Elizabeth, uh, not to get you away from another Taco Tuesday, uh, but to, um, be on the lookout for, uh. An HR committee meeting where this will be on the agenda and that would provide for a little bit more dialogue and back and forth there. So. To the community, again, folks, thanks for coming out. And I was trying not to say this, um, but it's, again, it is always amazing to see, um, folks that you have known for quite some time. In different capacities. And so, uh, greatly appreciative of you sharing words from your heart for the folks there. Again, that would be cool. So with that being said, if there are no more board responses, we will move forward with the agenda. Uh, and up next on the agenda is the consent agenda, uh, which is, uh, a relatively large consent agenda. This is our first meeting since our reorganization meeting. So there are a number of items on here, including, uh, support services for students, uh, personnel report, uh, minutes, um, and, uh. That's refined. So, so the consent agenda is the next agenda. I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Pat. Any questions, conversations, discussions about the consent agenda? There is a lot in the consideration. And most that's on the consent agenda is the, uh. Finalization of the significant amount of work that our twelve-month administrators do as well as folks who are not twelve-month. Administrators have been doing all summer long. So this is what we're voting on for today. Uh, if there is no additional questions or comments, uh, we were beginning last meeting, rather than taking a roll call since we weren't in person. Um, all those who approve. Passes unanimously. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown.
Oh, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Dr. Bradwell. Uh, just a quick announcement, maybe a couple of applause on some other topics. Uh, quick announcement, August the 18th at 6:00 PM, we will have our summer Ethica High School graduation ceremony. So I know board members tend to want to have that on their calendars. Um, and if I'm correct, that date has been set. So just want to put that number and date out there for folks at that time. Um, and I was supposed to sit here. I want to thank folks for coming, um, and appreciate people being in the space with us. Um, and also if folks are listening in, who are hearing about opportunities or not having opportunities for employment in our school district. Please know you can request a conversation with the hiring leader of the hiring committee and/or me, um. In my role over the last 12 years, I've met with a lot of folks who have, uh, been given or not been given an opportunity to be in our organization. And I will say to folks publicly right now, in every one of those situations, I've given folks feedback, very specific feedback of what to do next. Or what to, to do to be better and more positioned. And I was told this by a mentor a long time ago, and I will say it now, and I feel like I'm getting so old when I say this. How we respond when things don't go our way is always more important than how we respond when it does. So I will give that feedback, folks, as I do to folks when they come in and ask me about positions. And I will also say, um, when I follow up with people, which I always do about whether or not they took me up on the advice. Oftentimes I get some silence. So when you meet with us and you ask for feedback on how to be more, better positioned to get a role in the organization, because we want. People in our organization, particularly people who live and work here, um, please stick us up on that feedback and do something. Um, to be what better position the next time you have an opportunity. And, uh, no, I cannot feel like my mentors are talking through me right now. Um. Someone like you, Dr. Bradwell, my first day on the job, said, in this community, process is always more important than the product. As I'm thinking about, I've been in this meeting here now for the last year, having conversations with folks about the high school schedule. Um, and yes, because, because of the things that are out of our controls, i.e. state requirements, we've known that we needed to do something. That is just what we need to do. We knew long, we knew long ago that the process we would use to come up with a new schedule would be much more important than the product. While we know that the product is going to be important. But let's be clear, and I want to remind folks who have been in the space with us the last year and a half or two, as we've been talking about the schedule. That it's included surveys, student voice, community voices, public meetings, department meetings. Dozens of conversations about what the new schedule would be. Now I've been doing this work now, I'm in my third decade. I have yet to see a good schedule. All right? If someone has a good schedule, please present it to me and we will replicate that all over the country. But right now in the environments that we deal with, there is no perfect schedule. And so I would ask us to think about our approaches to perfectionism as we think about what a new schedule would be starting in August. We have not tried to propose schedule at the high school. It, will it be perfect? No. Will there be bumps in the road? Yes. Will we have to adjust it? Yes. That's what we do. But what I want us to do is to recognize the process and if, I, I was listening very carefully tonight and in every other session. About questions about the process, which I've heard very little, but the product, yes. So if there's, if there's some additional feedback on the process we went through to come up with a new high school schedule here, please share that with me because I want the process to be much better. And we also want the product. But I will, again, again, my role now as a community member and leader is to continue to. Recognize and point out when we are perpetuating some characteristics of supremacy culture. Perfectionism is one. So let's all avoid being perfect right now. I'm going back to this, this time last year, we were having the same conversation about. How would we check temperatures on the first day of school? And we almost didn't open on time because of that one issue. Because we had never done it before. People were expecting perfectionism and we didn't know what was going to happen. And we almost didn't start on time because people were afraid. I'm not saying scheduling, check temperature is the same thing, but I still see here's some elements of it. As I would ask us to think about where we are. We will start the school year and the schedule won't be perfect. We will get better once we get there. That's, I'm sorry. Typically I don't like to respond or add that commentary, but it is summer and, uh, I'm looking forward to getting this thing started. All right. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. I believe it was necessary. Uh, we will continue with the agenda. Up next is item, uh, 10.1, a resolution designated board of education standing advisory committees. Uh, this is a, there are two standing advisory committees that were tabled from the last meeting. Uh, we can have discussion about them. Uh, to take them off the table would take, would need a motion to take them off the table if we were going to vote on them. We do not need to have these committees. These are committees from previous years. Uh, but we felt like we needed to have the accurate information and the description of each committee. Uh, as the, um. Strangely, we say, as the current board president, I would make a, um, special plea. That we consider to continue the capital project committee. Uh, there is a great deal that takes place in having community input, um, has been very helpful, uh, through that process as someone who attended. The three-hour meeting this morning or maybe two and a half hour meeting this morning, whatever it was, six-hour meeting this morning. Um, but we have a, a pretty significant capital project taking place and that meeting has been helpful. Uh, doesn't mean I'm not advocating for the other committee meeting as well, but just to, I wanted to make sure I put that out there, but, um, normally I should not speak first, so. Um, reactions, conversations, discussions. Do we want a motion to take any of these off the table? How would we like to proceed? And I also recognize today that we're operating with five out of eight board members. Uh, we don't need to do anything if you want to keep it on an agenda for the next board meeting as well. That's what the board some desires.
I would feel comfortable if we, I hate moving things, you know, into the future and having rework, but. Just if we had the other board members here to discuss, I have not been to an early childhood education meeting. A while. Uh, just speaking personally, um. But I have attended some of the, um, capital project advisory committees. So I understand what you're saying, but I'd like to get some more input. I'd like also some feedback. Like also some feedback from other folks, because I know you participate in that a lot.
Something called here in here. Like many communities, our community really has a shortfall in terms of spaces, opportunities for our littlest residents to find their way into quality Head Start, daycare, and even our pre-K program. But there's no lack of trying on behalf of the school district. We have relationships that permeate this entire community, and the folks who help us manage that sit in the room and speak more clearly than I can about it, from RACER to to some other private programs. We do a great deal of sifting and sorting, and I know Deb works her tail off to find spaces for our kiddos. My experience with this committee is this committee has struggled, or the council has struggled to wrap our mind around the entirety of the complexity, and then to come up with some concrete steps to affect it in a positive way. I remember Dr. Brown was telling us that he was reaching out to some of the critical leaders of some of these organizations that we didn't have to take. We had participants from the Child Development Council, we didn't have the president. We had participants from some of the childhood centers, IC3, Downtown, we didn't have the leaders. I would be willing, I guess what I'm saying, I would be willing to still be a part of something, trying to move forward in that regard, but we have to raise the level of conversation. It has to be more aerial, it has to be a 3,000-foot conversation. I don't do well, I don't think my role is to do well on the ground. Trying to figure out where to get two kids a spot on Friday, because our program's ending on Friday at 11 o'clock, that's, that's not my role. So Chris, that's my initial takeaway. If we can elevate the conversation, get the principals at the table, we have as much skin in the game and are putting in as much resources towards the middle of the table as the district is, I think it's still a worthwhile endeavor. But I will end by saying, parents are almost in crisis out there in the real world. Doesn't matter if they're indigent parents who want to get to a childhood program that doesn't offer transportation, and there's no compensatory measure to help them pay for Uber, or if you have a brand-new Volvo, two squirts, and you're trying to run from one side of town to the other side after taking off work from your professional job and get them and take them two and a half hours to get there. None of us are doing well. None of them, not to put you out. I know dads are working hard too, and there are some dads who are primary caretakers. But I would say that very few mamas in this community who feel that they have, that they're being supported in this effort, and there's a sense to keep them in the best mental health five days a week while they have to try and be professionals. So it's a worthy endeavor, we may just have to change how we go about it.
Well, that was going to be my response to my board colleagues. You do not need to have an advisory council to do that work, right? So no matter what, whether we do any advisory council, doesn't mean the work still can't continue, or that Dr. Brown couldn't convene a committee or a group of folks on a regular basis. So we are not beholden to it. Remember when we began this committee, we were recognizing that there was some disconnect between multiple providers, and we were trying to bring folks together, so we understood. We can do that in a variety of ways. So I just want to make sure that the community knows that, that even if we weren't to approve a council, does not mean that we wouldn't be engaged in this work intent.
Yeah, I think that, that is my question to everyone, given I have not gone to the early childhood education advisory council you have, and it does not sound like the business of that council is something that needs or necessarily benefits from board members' active involvement. And as Sean says, the work is going to continue, whether it's a board advisory council or not. And I guess I would, I was going to say, I will ask the, the executive team in the room if our presence is necessary and helpful, but you're all so nice. You'd say, of course you're helpful, and I don't want to put you on that spot, so I'll leave that in the board's hands.
Any additional comments, questions, please?
Who, who is, who feels that this is a vital thing? It's, yeah, I, I wonder if it isn't somewhat redundant with some of the other agencies and, and charges that people have in town. And I, I'm not sure that this one is ours. You know, I've worked in the pre-K and special ed for a number of years, and I, I do wonder. I'd like to know what Deb Jordan thinks. I'd like to know what some of the other folks who are actively involved, if they find this a useful thing or just one more thing for them to have to deal with, so.
So hearing that, I think we should ask those questions and not make any moves this evening.
That, I would be abstaining tonight because I don't know the answer to that.
And then again, I will say to the community is that this advisory council was created prior to COVID, and so then was also disrupted by COVID and the ability to meet, and then also changed the questions and the priorities of what was taking place. So it would probably do us significant amounts of good to ask some additional questions. If we are being redundant and just adding more, or what are the ways in which we could either step out of the way or remove barriers for the folks who are actually trying to work at home?
I'll just respond very briefly, Jill.
I'm going to hold you to that.
One of the reasons why this group was founded, because Deb's predecessor, to maybe two predecessors, made it pretty clear. Doesn't matter what happens before these kids walk in our door, they're all coming in our doors. So it gives us, with our 150 million dollar budget, and the number of pre-K programs we have, a vested interest in trying to do it. Do what we can, right, with responsibilities, as you say, that are not ours completely, to create navigable spaces. Because by the time these babies come to us, we have enough spaces and enough resources to meet them.
So is it Denise I should be talking with about my this? Did I guess the right person, or?
So I think I'll wait forward to be for us to reach out to, to Mary, and to, and we'll cajole that conversation as well. We'll have to ask some questions, and then we'll proceed from there. But I'm hearing from my board colleagues that there's not going to be a motion to take any, either one of these councils off the table this evening, waiting for more conversation from our other board colleagues and some additional information. Does that seem like a good path forward?
Yes, for me. Okay.
Fantastic. That brings us to item 10.2, which is a discussion item. There is no action on this, and that is the removal of the Legislative Advocacy Committee. When we had our reorganization meeting, we voted on the number of standing committees that the board would have. This was one of those committees. A little bit of history, this committee, I want to say was started six years ago, if I'm not mistaken, maybe seven years ago, has done a number of things at the state level, particularly getting laws passed at state level, both specific to us and statewide, and has also met with our local and state elected officials and our federal elected officials as well. This year, when we went to complete our committee assignments, it, one being one board member short, it also meant that we had less people to fill various committee spots, and we had no one who was currently assigned to this committee. So the question was, is this a committee that we should consider for removal for this upcoming year? And again, not a voting item, but a discussion item, and I expect that we'll have discussion next week. So with that, any additional thoughts, comments that we need to share this evening?
Here's another one that I guess I should speak to, because I was, it's really involved. The laws that we helped get passed were profound, not just for the district, but some have statewide implications. The relationships that we developed with our local politicians were significant. But again, it's interesting, some we managed to move on our own. Whenever Dr. Brown stepped in the room, the ten-minute conversation changed, and the outcome moved a lot more rapidly, right? So that, that's interesting. You have your executives show up at the table, everyone realizes that there's different level of gravity. But I will say Ann was a driving force, everybody knows that. And like when we came here, when ABP, APR, like was reaching crisis levels for us, go right in and started to work on some valuable outcomes for teachers around, surrounding that program. But there's no driver now. I, I'm involved in other committees that are equally important, and other people who have personal restrictions on their time. So I don't have the time to do it.
So what I hear you saying is that there's not, if it's not a single person-led committee, it's not quite impactful.
Yeah, Miss Foot has a whole bevy of legislation they try to pursue. What Ann did is we sent her through that every year, picked the important ones, I have to talk about to Brown. For us, we made strategies to work on those things. Again, lots of trips to Albany, lots of conversations with our local representatives, and they got moved forward. It's not reactive. Unless something drastic happens, we're not going to be reactive to it.
But again, to that point, even if there's not a standing committee, it does not stop us from still scheduling meetings with our elected officials. It still doesn't stop us from making those trips to Albany.
It doesn't have to be its own individual committee to do that.
That's correct. They just won't have the sort of same organization and singular focus. And even last year, if I'm not mistaken, we only had two school board members on the committee. It wasn't even a committee, a pull-up committee, so.
I don't know what to say about the last few years, but mentally, I'm throwing away. What the hell is going on? Today I'm on a belt, I'm like that, that's probably it. You know, I'm not sure, we went to Albany last year.
So I'm going to keep Mr. Harris's quick comments. So this is also then something that we can bring up with, and we can explore other options as well. Maybe it doesn't need to be removed, maybe it's a postponement, maybe, whatever it may be, right? But I know we're not going to vote on it this evening. We just want to make sure our community is aware that, we're aware that there's no one currently assigned to this committee.
Yeah, and, and I'll just make the point again, this doesn't mean that the district cannot engage in legislative advocacy. It's just that we would not have a committee that's, that's pushing a certain agenda. Dr. Brown, our executive committee, will still keep us informed of important legislation, of important positions we can take. We remain informed through our New York State School Boards Association affiliation. It does not mean we will not be advocates anymore. It, it would mean that we would not have this committee, which has really only been active for five or six years. And it, it did do good work.
Amazing. So if there's no additional comments on this, we'll, you're on the agenda fantastic. Moving to item 10.3 is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Kids Discovery Trail Ethica. And the language is included in item 10.3. And I don't know if anyone has questions about what the work that we do with Kids Discovery Trail. I would hope that many of us are aware of the amazing partnership. But I also don't want to make that assumption.
Somebody just speak quickly to what the highlights are of the actual MOE. If I saw it, I would remember what's actually going on.
We provide space for the training. We offer our educators to get trained and, or to get an overview of the program. But also I provide staff person, some time for staff members. It's been Miss Beckman for years, and I'm assuming she may continue to be involved, looking around.
Yeah, so she has been very gracious to give us some transition time. Last year she stayed down on a very, a fraction of the work to support Jobel Bay, who's continuing again this year with, with her support.
Yeah, the transportation's all us, obviously, but.
And the, the program's also been enhanced by paid training for teachers to attend the sites and experience them before they go with their students, given having two years of the pandemic and not being able to do those in-person trips as much. We're really grateful for the trainings that were offered in the spring.
And Mary, my apologies for asking you to speak to this without giving you advance notice, but a quick summary of what the Kids Discovery Trail Ethica does for, with the advocacy school district?
Absolutely. So they have been really, I would say instrumental in growing relationships between students across schools. So there are buddy schools, and the students are partnered with a school where both of those schools will feed into the same middle school, so that there's a common experience for all fourth-grade students. This is the Eight Square Schoolhouse, and they do so along, here's where they'll be attending middle school. And it enhances the already, the state standards are thought of when designing the curriculum. And in fact, it's been really exciting to see anti-markingization case studies grow out of the KBC, KDT experiences.
And for any community members, the copy of the memorandum is also included in our board docs as well. So if we were to vote on it, we would need it to be moved in.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with Kids Discovery Trail Ethica as presented and authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement on behalf of the district.
Second. Moved by Pat, seconded by Eldred, is that Eldred?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Passed unanimously, thank you very much. Item 10.4 is an athletic merger with Truensburg Central School District for girls varsity ice hockey and varsity wrestling. Just real quick, this is not uncommon for us to have mergers with some of our surrounding school districts. The one policy implication that folks should be aware of, that is stated pretty clearly, that this would never displace a student within the advocacy school district. So whenever we have any athletic merger, it's pretty much indicative that we probably both need the athletes, the student athletes to be participating. But I just hope for them to say that. So I don't know if anybody has questions.
It's mutually beneficial.
It is almost always mutually beneficial.
So that, that was going to be my question. That is the question I raise pretty much every year with athletic mergers as a result of in years past, hearing from parents whose daughters were going to be displaced as goalie by someone from another district, or sons were not going to be able to wrestle in their weight class through someone in another district. So as long as the, the merger preserves the participation rights of our district, I would, I would support it. All right, I, I will, I will move the athletic merger. This will be a first for me.
You were gaining in your athletic literacy.
Thank you on, on, on this spine tutorial. Finally, after many years spent with members of this board, I am gaining new skills. I move to approve the athletic mergers with the Truensburg Central School District for varsity girls ice hockey and varsity wrestling for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second. Moved by Pat, seconded by Chris.
My pleasure.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Agenda item 10.5, a resolution to attend the Leadership and Education events. This is for one of our new board members to go get some additional training in.
In Albany?
In Albany, of all places. So you brave soul.
How much are we paying you to take a trip to Albany?
Good luck finding your building.
I move for board member Jill Tripp to attend the 2022 Leadership and Education Event, August 12th through August 13th, 2022, with a cost of $100.
Second. Moved by Pat, seconded by Eldred. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
It's all we've got.
Motion passes unanimously. Enjoy, and please let us know when you come back. Item 10.6, resolution to approve online new member training. This is for one of our new board members to receive online training through the New York State School Board Association.
I move to approve expenditures for board member Karen Yearwood to attend new board member online training for $200. I move to approve expenditures for Board Member Karen Yearwood to attend new board member online training for $260.
Second. Moved by, moved by Pat, second by Eldred. Any discussion or questions?
Just with the notation to the public that this, that this board training is required of all new board members. So it is, it is a New York State requirement that it be done either in person or online within the first year of service.
No additional questions or comments. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Item 10.7, the New York State School Board Association Annual Convention Authorization. This is an opposition to approve Eldred Harris and Moira Lang to attend the annual NISBA convention in October.
Which this year is being held in Syracuse, I believe. Fun city. I move to approve expenditures for Eldred Harris and Moira Lang to attend the annual NISBA convention from October 27th to October 29th, 2022.
Second. Moved by Pat, second by Chris. My only discussion item is I think Pat needs to be on the tourism board of Albany and Syracuse.
I know my way around this place.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Item 10.8 is our TST BOSI's delegate. This is a discussion item. We have not selected someone to be our TST BOSI's delegate. Pat or Anne or Eldred, you have done it previously. Am I wrong about that?
We have both done it. So this is, this is the one that goes to the TST board. None of the, okay, and Moira has also been in this panel. This is a monthly meeting by TST BOSI's that brings together representatives from all of the school districts in our BOSI's area. We provide, pre-COVID, when I served, it provided lunch that was made by the TST BOSI's culinary staff. That was lots of fun. It takes place up at the BOSI's building, or I don't know what it'll do this year. Members of each district bring each other up to date on what's happening in the district. Jeff Madison informs all of the members of new things that are happening at BOSI's. And a member of NISBA usually attends the meetings and gives updates on what's going on in Albany and what's important. I think it's about two to two and a half hours. It's informative and collegial and a way to find out more about other districts. Eldred, you were our last.
Yeah, I actually, I actually went into it with preparation. Trying to find snow and salt. Turned out to be a really great experience. Each independent district did consultations about some new creative work, thinking what we're adding to what we're doing. We got the toilet P-tech facilities. And it was really, we had some really powerful discussions around some particular circumstances that happened recently. In Buffalo, one woman there was from the hometown of a young man who portrayed a genius act, and that led to some from the incredible conversation.
Shandanga.
Shandanga, Susquehanna, Cala.
Susquehanna Valley.
Susquehanna, Dallas, that's it, that's it. That was, that was really, my fact, this young woman grew up on the same block with this child. It's a true good point, yeah. So that was, that was our, something that I would never have experienced in another way. So I'm willing to, as a matter of fact, I am excited about rejoinder. How about, how about that, Pat?
Okay, let's vote. Well, it is on the agenda as a discussion item. We can put it on the agenda for the 23rd as a voting item when we have additional board members here to affirm whoever is going to serve in that position.
So is it all board members or are there staff members?
We select, the TST delegate is made up of board members from each of the component districts and TST BOSI's.
It's always all for, okay. Well, I won't fight you for it because you're so excited. I volunteered for it because I love BOSI's. But you have precedents, go for it.
We have our precedents, we'll continue to discuss it. But I'll tell you, the smaller districts really get joy hearing from us because we're the you know, proud gorilla, so, yeah.
Right, we're about 40% of the student population of TST BOSI's.
Yeah, I haven't seen Jeff in action differently. Well, it's interesting too. When he comes here, I'll get to see him at the same capacity.
And for our listening public, Dr. Jeff Madison is the superintendent of, the district superintendent of TST BOSI's. So this will be put on the agenda for the next meeting as a voting item, and we will proceed from there. And then lastly, also as a discussion item is the vacancy that's currently on the board. Obviously, we are not going to make a decision with three of our colleagues now present, but it's something that we need to continue to discuss. So I don't know if there's questions, discussion items, et cetera.
Would it be move us just to share with the public once again our three options?
Yes, the board actually has three and a half options is probably the best way of saying. The board can hold a special election. The special election would probably take us anywhere between 45 to 60 days for completion. If I'm not mistaken, last time we ran numbers, when we stayed expensive, it was good that new board members asked, what does expensive mean? If I'm not mistaken, we're talking about close to $60,000 to $80,000 depending on. And I'm looking at Amanda to see if I'm correct about this.
If we, if we consider the staff time that goes into that and the hourly support, yes, that would increase upwards. On the election itself is about 45, 45 to 46.
So thank you for that. So that's, yes.
And Sean, before you move on from that option, the resulting, the result would be for the winner, two term, two years?
The result would be for the winner to complete the term. And the term currently ends in 2020, June of 2024. The next thing the board can do, not the next thing, it's not in order, I apologize. But another thing that the board can do is leave the seat vacant. And that would happen until the next election, which would be May of 2023. And the person who, the way which the process works is not how we've historically been told it works. So for example, in May of 2023, if we had four people who were elected, the highest vote getter could choose if they wanted to complete the vacant seats or fulfill a three-year term. If they chose the three-year term, the second highest vote getter would have the option of completing the vacant term or a three-year term. If that person chose to fulfill the three-year term, the third highest vote getter would have the choice. And then the fourth highest vote getter would receive what is remaining, which is oftentimes completing the vacant term. And that would be one year and be up for reelection the following year, if that's what took place with the vacancy. Very similar process would happen with a board appointment. The board has the opportunity to appoint someone in this seat. I've seen this happen three different ways in the state. Doesn't mean that there aren't other ways. Usually, what happens most regularly from both my research and my experience is that the board would appoint the highest vote getter in the most recent election. That tends to be what happens in most situations. Other school districts have had their own vetting process. They've invited people to apply, had their own interview process, and have selected a member that they felt would be a good addition to the team. And other times, folks have appointed recently departed school board members, especially given the fact that it's usually a one-year term and the catch-up speed is pretty quick. I mentioned that, so to review the three options, special election, keep the seat vacant, or appoint somebody. If the board chooses not to appoint and leave the seat vacant, Dr. Jeff Madison from TST BOSI's has the authority to appoint someone. That they have that option to do so. So TST could appoint someone if the board chose to leave the seat vacant, as could the Commissioner of Education. I don't think I've ever seen the Commissioner of Education appoint someone, but it has happened where district superintendents have appointed members to the school boards. So that's the three and a half options that I was referring to. So that's where we find ourselves.
I could, I could see the commissioner stepping in if you have a contentious large district in a four-four.
And usually that would happen through the district superintendent at the BOSI's level. But again, both options are good. So I hope I didn't confuse folks too much with those options for those of us.
I think that was pretty good.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments?
I'll, I'll make the comments that I think in the 11 years I've been on the board, we have had maybe four vacancies for various reasons. And that I believe that in two occasions, we appointed the next highest vote giver, getter when that was, when it was a recent election. And that when it was coming up close to an election, like within maybe three months or less, we just left it vacant. So we have not called for a new election. We have not taken it upon ourselves to vet individuals. The only, the only way that we have by precedent appointed is to go to the recent elections. And I put that as a point of history.
I've experienced five vacancies and, but it's still the same. We've either left the seat vacant or we've appointed the next highest vote getter in a recent election.
I'm going to comment that my, the first year of Chris's and my election, there was a vacancy, it was an eight-person board. And I happened to be the highest vote getter that year. I was not told that I could choose. I'm not, I was not, was not only told that I would have the full three-year term, but that because I was the highest vote getter, I would have to start two months early.
You had the option. Right, that's always been a.
I remember the cry in my voice when I was told this. Because I thought I'd have a couple of months of quiet, but, and now I find that that wasn't here.
Law may have changed as well. I can just tell you what my research has told me most recently. And I'm talking with our legal counsel about where our options are. So this will be on the agenda, my recommendation, and I will follow up with our board colleagues who are not here, that we make a decision on August 23rd, prior to the start of the school year, whatever direction we're going to head. Again, if I'm not mistaken, and trusty, let me know, I believe that if we were to post for an election, it would be at least 45 days, advance notice and a newspaper, newspaper of our choice. So we would be talking about, you know, a week or two to get things set up, 45 days notice, and then the election. So it would be cost and time, not, that is not a reason not to hold an election. Just want to make sure that we understand some of the nuances that are on the table as well. But whatever we do, I think we should try to go into the school year with whatever decision the board is going to decide upon. Fantastic. Any additional discussion items for this evening? If not, I will add one thing. For committee members, know that we received a number of letters to the full board. We have tried to respond to those immediately. The board will be under much more regular meeting from here on out, even though people will still be doing some travel until the school year begins. But please know, if we haven't responded immediately, it is on the board's radar. And we will be responding once we have a much fuller collection of our board members to engage in discussions and dialogue about how rest is pursued. And with that being said, next week, there will be the facilities meeting will happen at 5:00 PM. And then finance will happen at 6:00 PM, 6:30 PM. We were going to have a conversation. Currently, we sent this out as well. The governor has extended the state of emergency until August 13th. It's entirely possible that by that date, that state emergency would be extended again. But at this point in time, we are planning on those facilities and finance committee meetings being in person. We will follow up if there is a change to let our committee, our community know. And if there's no other items, then we will bring the meeting to a close. Thank you, good folks. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy this weather.